I'm making it now. I live on Lake Street. I came here last week. We discussed the issue with my neighbor burning. And I spoke to Cliff and he was supposed to look into the nuisance law for us, but I haven't heard back about that. So I went ahead and I looked at some of the code to see if there's anything I could find that applied. I did print some out if anybody would like some. This first one, like God said, the general standards, this is, I guess, doesn't really apply, but we were hoping that... So on the first one, on the first page, the 12037, the impact A there, if this applies to people that are going to be building something, it should also apply to something that already exists. So we were thinking, you know, going through it and it's saying traffic noise, fumes, odors, and what it is, is an air pollution, is that the smoke is coming into our house. So we're going with that and I did find something in the nuisance law on page four regarding hazardous waste and hazardous chemicals, you know, because it's smoke and it's definitely not good for the health. So if we can get one of these things to apply to get it changed, or, you know, we're just trying to find something.
I wasn't the last one. Where does he start putting the little bomb? Down that lake or next to his?
It's next to the house. So I'm right there in Jeff Keeble's building and he's in that street building. So right in that little corner way, they built a deck and he's got a fire pit there. And this, our building is right there, like all of our windows are maybe a foot away from that building. So we can't open any of our windows. And even with the window closed, that bedroom on the end there smells so bad, like smoke, like we have fire, that we have to keep the door closed and we can't even, we don't use it at this point.
Did you talk to him about it?
Yep. I asked him. He put it out before and that was that. I called Cliff. He's gone and talked to him. We were told last time to call 911, which we did, and Walt came and spoke to him. So that didn't seem to get anywhere. The second time we called 911, nobody even came. Nobody responded, nothing. We had to call back. Two hours later and the state troopers came. Now we don't know what to do because if there's an issue, then nobody's going to even come. So...
I could see if she had called 10 times and to pass it off as a nuisance call, but the second time and nobody comes, that's dangerous. I'm sorry, that's unacceptable.
Well, you mean the fire department come?
No.
It doesn't mean that they called the fire department. Just because you called 911 doesn't mean... They could've said, "Well, you're just being a nuisance. We're not going to call." I've never... You hear the page?
Never heard the page.
We're both in the fire department. Nothing says... I can't...
Didn't even hear the page for the first one. Could that be a couple of them or they just called the chief and had the chief call dispatch?
The first time that's, it was Walt that came, so...
That's what they do is they called the chief. They called for a chief, an officer to call fire control. And Walt called the first time. I don't know who called the second time. I don't know if it was Mike.
Okay. That's the three of us on the fire department now and entering up the page, you go out for a burning call.
Jess don't understand how to look for it, is that correct?
Huh?
He just doesn't understand how to do it.
He just doesn't want to stop because there's nothing that can make him stop. Like in his mind, he's going to go out there and he's going to do it because he can. And he doesn't care if it's coming in our windows or if it's bothering us because they built that deck out there. They just built it this summer. Now they're out there every night burning. If it stops raining for 10 minutes, they've got a fire line.
Which one's on? This side or your?
The north side.
The north side of her. I see where she goes, make a little motion, a little burning and rather than... We should get this to the village attorney and let him go through this and see what the options are.
Can we just go off what she's already found here? I mean, if there's smoke and there's fumes and odors.
Well, the fumes and odors.
It's already written in the thing. So if it bothers anybody else, you can't burn. I mean, if you have fire pit at your house and it's not bothering your neighbors, we should be able to burn. But if it bothers your neighbors, then out of respect or other zoning laws, you can't do it. It says written in the zoning law.
We should give something like that to the village attorney and let him go after it.
Right.
Village attorney can actually draw the perfect papers.
Happened during a day, night, or doesn't matter when?
Usually, I would say around 7:30, 8 o'clock, but if it, like if it stops raining at 10, he'll start a fire at 10. You know, it's just, I think now it's more out of, I can do it and there's nothing you can do about it. I mean, we just want to, we don't want our stuff ruined. We want to be able to open our windows. We want to be able to breathe.
What's he burning? Straight fire or just?
Nope. What? This one.
Well, this looks good to me. I would say we could, next time, call, see if there's a village police officer on.
Okay.
And give him a copy of this. Maybe he can...
Do something. Okay.
Well, I mean, the last time we were here, it was suggested that, what happens when you dial 911? And you say that there's, the neighbor is burning and I'm afraid that my house is going to catch on fire?
Brian just said that they might say, they'll tone off Frost Point Fire Department, whoever's, and say, "Chief Officer, line line dispatch." And then they'll call and say, "Well, we've got somebody saying that there's smoke coming in his house from the fire pit." A lot of times, chief officer will talk to the person that's burning. I've never had a problem with him putting it out.
No, I think the first time he did, he did, but then, you know, the next night or a few nights later, it...
It's become a nuisance at this point and the kids are afraid of fire. The way the house is set up, their house is probably 20 feet further out from his apartment where he's burning. So their house is right there, two or three feet away from this burning pit.
Rejoining, we can, I suggest is, next time, call and see if there's a law enforcement village on. We'll get this to him tomorrow. Yeah, and then he can go by this and talk to the guy.
How do you get ahold of law enforcement that's after hours?
Call the water plant.
Is that in the phone book? Call the office number.
It's the same number during the day.
The water plant?
Yeah.
Yeah, 313.
The building that's right behind the village office.
Right.
Or if you can't, yep, drive there.
That's where dispatches, they're all 24 hours.
Okay. The point is, we shouldn't have to be doing this. My granddaughter's in there. Heaven forbid.
We get our Scott over and talk to him tomorrow. Tom, he's on tomorrow?
I don't know.
Well, we would appreciate if you guys would handle it tomorrow and talk to whoever's in charge and maybe they can go speak to this person.
If you can copy this?
Yeah.
And again, maybe, maybe the code's person founds, he was supposed to research that. We never heard back from him. Megan said she called three other times and he never returned a call after that. So maybe there was something else he found, but, you know. He didn't get back.
Scott will take care of that tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And if that don't work, then we'll move on to the village attorney?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, does it come from us or does it have to come from zoning officer?
What's that?
This is a zoning...
It's a health issue.
It's a health issue, but it's zoning. Do we have authority over it? Do we have to get Clifford to make the necessary paperwork to go to the lawyer?
Why would you say that's zoning?
Well, with a zoning issue, he's the zoning officer and this is part of the zoning law?
No.
Get the attorney and ask that attorney the questions.
The attorney would, under fire prevention in the code, he would, he would look into doing it. Yeah, it's not a zoning, it wouldn't be zoning.
Give us options and draw a certified letter and you have to...
I mean, there is...
You can just let him know what needs to be addressed and then he will put it in local law form at some point and then he'll be sent back to the board for review and it'll be part of the local law at best.
But in the meantime, that's like a too much process, so...
Well, eventually we'll do that based on this.
Thank you.
Excuse me, mayor, I have a presentation from Melissa on the agenda.
We're doing that.
For the supplemental.
Second session.
No, she's going to present her presentation to the board.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'd like to start off just by thanking everyone involved as a resident for their efforts on the 4th of July. I just saw Mrs. Roberts and Mrs. LaPena carrying the last things from the Jose reboot and it just reminded me of the amount of effort that everybody puts in so we can all enjoy the weekend. I thought the parade was beautiful and the fireworks were just fantastic. Kind of a new place to watch, not telling anybody. It was absolutely gorgeous. So thank you to everyone. Thank you to the village. I know it takes a lot of everybody's effort to keep the old tradition going. Okay, so first of all, a quick update on the DNH project. We had a very nice open house the day of the community-wide garage sale and business promotion day on June 22nd. Thank you to the mayor and trustee Martin and former trustee Becky Reed, who were there to help me greet everyone. And also to Walt Laramie, who between ambulance calls was there to share his extensive knowledge of the DNH system. It was about 50 people came through, some very positive response. I think everybody really just appreciated the chance to get in and we were able to let people know it's done and that hopefully sooner rather than later, it'll actually be open. So thank you to everyone for that. In terms of the construction, not much new. I sent an updated report over to Carol today, which I'm sure you'll all find in your mailboxes tomorrow. Not a lot new. We're still working through the punch list items between the contractor and the engineer. The only thing is that we did get the mechanical contractor up here. He met with Brian. The building temperature seemed good during the open house. Brian, are you comfortable with that at this point or...
There's one more adjustment that I have to make.
Okay.
But it should, if it's, I mean, if it feels comfortable in there.
It seemed to, and I think we can probably go up and check it again before we pay the bill. I have a conference call with the engineer and DOT on Tuesday next week. So if somebody could just stop in and let me know if you think everything's okay. You know, just a reminder, the building is meant to be closed. That's why there are no screens. It's supposed to be closed up and the air system is supposed to keep the temperature and the humidity constant for the, you know, the future artifact. So you could just, and then we did talk about, it has a thermostat that you never know if it's a thermostat. And we talked about, once again, we take over just popping something that we can all figure out a little better when we go in. So other than that, not much new. You'll see on the, we still have the same punch list item. I would also like to thank both Ben Arno in particular, who did a lot to help get the site ready, and Dick Baker and the village crew went up. It looked really nice, you know, inside and out when we had it public there. So thank you, everybody. Do you have any questions on the DNH before I move on in terms of the project completion? Yes, Brian.
Did you receive that paper I put in your box about, about that computer program unit? That's supposed to be with the unit?
No. I did, because I haven't checked my mailbox. It's probably sitting down there waiting for me.
That was over, what, a week or two ago?
Yeah.
When I went there?
Yeah.
I wrote on the top of it, there's a computer that runs the air handler upstairs.
Okay.
And if you have to do any changes, that's the way you change it.
Okay.
It's all preset.
Okay.
And we paid for it.
Okay.
But we did not receive it.
Oh!
That's, that's, yeah.
There's a unit that's missing?
Yes.
Well, that's an important detail. Okay, thank you.
I left a note in your mailbox at work and I wrote on the top of it that that unit was missing.
Okay.
Actually, I think I printed the page as a unit right also because I gave you a copy also.
Okay.
So we're missing that unit. It's a very vital piece of equipment that we need.
Okay.
So if we ever change any temperature, the unit that you see on the wall, when you push the override button, it only raises or lowers four degrees.
Okay.
It's preset. That building is set, like during the day, it's going to be a certain temperature. At night, it drops down to a temperature.
So that's why the thermostat is...
Is the way it is.
Okay, all right, good. Well, I'll stop in and pick that up. Carol, if you could fax that over. I have been out of commission most of the past three weeks. I've had some issues that have really knocked me. So I will get that and we haven't done anything with Brockwise, so...
About a $600 unit.
Okay, all right. Very good. We'll add that to the punch list. And is it, is it a one-page thing, Brian?
Yes, yes.
Carol, would you mind scanning and sending that? Yeah, I don't, I don't regularly check my mailbox. So just flag anything for me that I really need to see, okay? Because I don't always get in to empty that out. Okay, so we'll take care of that. Any other questions or on the station? Okay. Just quickly, the micro grant, as you see, we have, the new businesses are open. Business promotion day went, I think, very well from what I heard from the businesses. Thank you to Ron LeBlanc, who chaired that committee for the revitalization committee, and Tammy DiBarnardo, who did a lot of legwork pulling the drawing together and everything. I heard really good things from even some of the longer-term business owners who had a chance to say, "Hey, we're still here" and have people stop in. The Beer Emporium is open in the downtown. Border Boutique Fashions open in the former Pearl's building. The B&amp;B is already accepting reservations, not open yet, but they are booking. And Northeastern Woodworking, I heard from Scott Blow, tremendous response. He is busy, 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 busy. The boaters are finding him. It's all very exciting. So, and then we have one more. The Border Runners Mail Forwarding is in progress and will be up and running. So they're all, you know, it's, that grant, I'll tell you, I'm disappointed. It's not offered again in this year's CFA round. We got the last one in 2011, but I'm working on something that maybe could substitute for Clinton County. So let's keep our fingers crossed on that. Okay, and then, you know, just one more thing I wanted to add and apologize to everybody. I'm not going to say which one, I know I'll be one. You know, so many positive private sector things. I mean, the squirrel's nest open and the business it's doing. That grass restoration at the senior resort center that Mark Lawrence has done, isn't that amazing? Just what, I mean, I just, I can't, and the work they're doing on the building is absolutely beautiful. And so just lots of hopeful signs, still getting a lot of business inquiries. Actually, not too much space left available and so I'm working with some of the people that have had vacancies for a long time to see if we can maybe open those spaces up for leasing. So thank you on that. Just a quick alert for the board. A couple, we're meeting with the revitalization committee next Monday night, right here. It's going to be kind of our wrap-up of last year. We have that leveraging study that we worked on for the key sites. Just a final review of that. So you're all welcome to join us. I'm going to run a preview of grants that I'm recommending by them and I wanted to run it by you first. The first thing is definitely another Main Street program grant. That's the grant program. It comes out of HUD money that gets funneled through New York State. It's for facade restoration, so the fronts of buildings and building restoration. It's 75% funded by the state, 25% by the local property owner. So it is an incredible opportunity for our local property owners, business owners, to improve their buildings. We ran one several years ago. Rick Sluska used it. That's what we did, the building where the agency is. It gave us all our parking lot signage that we have in the parking lot and the directional signage. Chris Deuce used it for the coffee shop. Al Kaufman used it to redo his building. Jeff Keeble used it. So I really feel it's time for us to do this again. We have some new property owners who have expressed an interest. We prioritize our key sites. So, you know, Rick Sluska is definitely interested for his building. We'd like to look at some others that, you know, really are high on the list if we can get the property owners to participate. So just wanted to let you know, the funding for the application, I would handle that. It would come out of what you pay me from grant funds. So there's no additional cost for the village. So if you're willing, yeah, I think you have, the business community is really looking for this, to have that happen. And the administrative money comes out of the grant. So it's all, you know, it's no investment for the village. So... Okay, so is it okay to proceed? Okay. And then the other thing is, we have, I'm not recommending a grant application from Rousas Point for the local waterfront this year, but I'm hoping that Rousas Point will maybe consider looking for funding out of two pots of regional money that we have. We have the Rousas Point Award on behalf of Clinton County that we got last year, which will be executed in the fall. There's a significant amount of money there. And then I'm writing another one for Clinton County this year for regional projects. So some of the things that I've heard mentioned, the solar signs for the speed in the downtown, we can certainly put in. That scenic byways, the plans are down in Bumper's office. We're going to go through them. I'm going to email a PDF out to everybody. But the gateway signs, we have some money from the federal government. We could get the state money to pay for the rest, get some real nice entrance signage to the village. There has been talk about temporary dockage so that we could have our boaters come in and dock for a few hours. That would be another option. And also some marketing to a group that, remember Janet Kennedy talked to those of you that were on the board last year, the birders, the fishermen, the naturalists. We don't market that much, but boy, we've got great fishing and burning and nature trails right there, right? You know, Stony Point South, that whole Point Affair Refuge. And why not have people stay in Rousas Point and go do their burning? You know, eat at the squirrel's nest and Samby's and... So those would all be possible proposals that we would put in for, for our own heat project in 2013. So I can talk to you more and get you little sketches on those, but that's just a preview. So I think that's it. I just wanted to run all that by you, see if you had any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thanks.
Minutes of the previous meeting, regular reading of June 17, 2013, and a special meeting of June 21, 2013.
Make a motion to accept.
Second. No discussion, vote void. You decide by. Aye. And now it's bills. Everybody's got a copy of the bills?
There are no additions or deletions tonight. We have no additions or deletions.
No, yeah, okay. I'll make it a motion to pay the bills.
No discussion?
Yes. Mr. Rivers has got on here for a carb kit in the muckman?
I think that was for the generator fire department. You paid out of his pocket. We just reimbursed him.
Oh, is it just a reimbursement? Okay.
That's right. I believe so.
Now, is that the same carburetor and that's up a little further to end up needing another 4675?
George worked on one and John worked on a couple of those generators.
Well, we go home by the village or we're those?
The fire departments.
They're by the fire department, so my brother holds up a ladder also or...
Fire department.
Fire department. Okay.
Okay. Any other discussions? No discussions, vote void. You decide by.
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents.
I only have one item. It's, since Mandy Bayshard has had to forego being reappointed to the library board, the library board wishes to submit the name of Wendy Engelbrand for appointment to replace her. We would appreciate your action on this recommendation as soon as possible. The term would be for the full five years. Thank you for your kind consideration in this matter. This is Andrew Uwrit, president of the Dodge and Rota Library. That's on your agenda to do something.
We're in for five years.
Five-year term, yes.
What was her name? Wendy?
Wendy Engelbrand.
I need a motion to accept it.
I make a motion to accept Wendy as on the library.
Second.
Any discussions? Then vote void. You decide by.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Francis Baker, mayor Francis Baker, requests an executive session to discuss contract negotiations, property on Lake Street. Make a motion.
Discuss it.
Second.
I need a motion.
Aye.
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 Mayor goes aye. This discussion on the street sign on Brad Street, we got the call from POT and all we have to do is make a resolution. I want to put the sign from Allegiant parking lot to the corner of Brad Street. Because when they had the...
The old theater.
Yeah, the old theater. Yeah, right there because when they had the Queen of Hearts, they had them two people cut off constantly. So the fellow told me, make a resolution and they'll come up and put the sign up. Soon as that man let the hand water them. All right, would you guys?
Yes.
Someone needs to make a motion.
Make a motion for resolution?
Second.
No discussions, vote void. You decide by. I'll call it.
Aye.
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 What is I? That's it. Trustee Martin.
Need an executive session to discuss Civic Center for Smell.
Motion for executive session to discuss personal.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'm going to hear both sides. Okay, Trustee Mascol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have is to request an executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
Make a motion to discuss contract negotiations.
Second.
I'll call it.
Aye.
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 Aye, Mayor goes aye. Okay, Trustee Moore.
I have nothing.
Trustee, trustee.
Mayor, I got a resolution for the MEUA annual meeting, August 2013.
That was approved, you recall, from the last meeting, but we need to do the, if anybody is going to go, we need to do the resolution, naming the delegate. If you're not going to go, then we do the resolution for the proxy.
Well, it's an eight-hour drive. It's a three-day deal.
I don't have the three days.
I really want you to go.
We can go by proxy.
Do we know what the votes are about? Do we know what the votes are about? What are the voting on?
A lot to see. A lot to see.
Second, go by proxy then. Make a motion to allow proxy?
Yeah, second.
Any other discussion? No discussion, vote void. You decide by.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one more thing here.
That's a vote call. Yes.
Aye.
Do you guys motion?
Aye.
Okay, one more thing. Mayor, I got a question. Executive session to discuss possible litigation.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to accept executive session for possible litigation?
Second. Second.
Aye.
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 Mayor goes aye. Okay, other reports?
Uh, see, Mayor, you missed, uh, one of the resolutions in support of the St. Lawrence Psychiatric Center under supplemental.
I guess that's right.
Yeah.
I just got it, Carol, what's that all about?
Apparently, they're, they're, the way I understood it is that they're afraid that they're gonna have manpower cut to their facility, and, uh, they're looking at possibly five hundred or so employees that they could lose, and they're trying to keep it going by getting support from the different counties that, because it houses the five or six different counties throughout the North Country, and they're, they're just asking for our support.
For showing our support.
Yeah.
Make a motion?
Second.
No discussion, vote void, you decide by.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
One more thing there, Carol, what are we gonna do about this, this letter we got from Rosemary, Ellie?
Oh, I don't know if you, I don't know.
Did we get that to everybody else?
I don't know if we, I didn't pass them out after you, I didn't do.
Okay.
But I think the mayor got it, I think, I'm not sure if you had.
So you're gonna take care of Rosemary's request?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take care of it, all right, thanks.
Sorry.
Okay, other reports, Arson, you have anything?
Uh, the only thing on the report started tomorrow with a five percent penalty period for taxes, that's through Ju, July thirty-first.
All right. Um, just a report that the black cop crew is back, they should be done tomorrow, they have a little more to do on Maple, and they put the shim coat on Church, so hopefully they'll finish up tomorrow and they'll be on their way.
Surprised with the weather.
Then we can get back to our, you know, yeah, our cuts in the road, like on Montgomery Street, there's some sidewalks that are out, there's a cut on Rose Avenue, that's the